This is awkward, but we'll get it. Okay. Come on up. Ready? Okay. Whereas the Lions Club of Vandelia, Ohio was founded in 1942 as an organization dedicated to encouraging fellowship while also bettering the community. And whereas the Vandelia Lions Club has worked tirelessly embracing programs and activities that result in the betterment of the city of Vandelia and its citizens. And whereas one of the Vandelia Lions Club's key projects has been the promotion of better eye care for children and funding the purchase of eyeglasses for area children in need. And whereas the Vandelia Lions Club further serves the community by providing scholarships to high school students, volunteering countless hours to support the mission of the Vandelia Food Pantry, and spearheading other philanthropic efforts and projects too numerous to mention. And whereas for 68 consecutive years, the Vandelia Lions Club has sponsored a Halloween parade, giving local children the opportunity to show off their costumes to the community in a fun, safe environment. And whereas 2017 marks the 75th anniversary of the club's founding, making it the longest tendered active community service organization in Vandelia. And whereas Vandelia City Council wishes to recognize the Lions Club's many years of service to the community and congratulate its members on this remarkable anniversary. Now therefore, I, Arlene Setzer, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 21st, 2017, as Vandelia Lions Club Day in the city of Vandelia, and urge our citizens to congratulate the organization for its longstanding dedication to the city of Vandelia and the surrounding community. Thank you so very, very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. It's a great honor. Mayor, other members of the city council, thank you for giving this honor to our club on this major anniversary. The time and effort put into this is very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Mr. Neidoff.
Thank you all for coming. We have no public hearings this evening, and that brings us to comments from inter citizen citizens. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment to the council, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and your statement? Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Don Hutchison, 1058 Bristol Drive. I just wanted to come in today and speak in support of the resolution for the ordinance on the banning of the open feeding. In the area where I'm at on Bristol, adjacent to where some of the more crowded parts of the cat population are occurring on North Brown School, they're basically getting out of hand. And not only that, we're having to contend with -- I've lived in that plat since -- in that same area since about 1957. I've never seen the animals coming out and being as brazen they are now. My young son lives down on North Brown School with my grandson, my granddaughter, and there's family. And at times, we go out in the evening during the summer when they're trying to have a time together, and the animals come in there, and they act very brazen. And there's times we're trying to go over there and work on stuff and help them out, you know, beautify their house, take care of it. And we put -- they put down mulch, and the cats that are around there just turn it into an absolute, you know, a kitty litter bag box. And then you gotta take it back out and you put it back in, and it's right back the same way. And I have two-year-old grandson, and I don't want to see him having to grow up within that stuff that seems to be generated by the repetitive open feeding. And I just wanted to put my voice in, in, you know, acceptance of it, hoping it goes through, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much for your comments. Is there anyone else?
Yes, my name is Cindy Watson. I would like to make a comment.
Would you like to move the mic a little bit closer to --
Is this better?
Oh, that's much better, thank you.
Okay. My name is Cindy Watson. I have not lived here as long as this gentleman. I moved to Vandelia in '83. I don't see many cats where I am, I'll admit that.
Could you give us your address?
960 Bright Avenue. It's over behind where the Fulmers was. Bright runs between Pool Avenue and Alkaline. And I was concerned about this, especially -- so I called today and got a copy of the PDF sent to me. And my concerns, as it is written, is that item B implies you can still feed birds, but between B and C3, it implies that where the bird seed falls from my feeder, I will be in contempt because squirrels will come. And also, I sometimes put bird seed actually on the patio underneath my bird feeder for the morning doves. I think they're called morning doves. My husband called them that. This basically says if your feed drops and squirrels get it, you are in contempt. I'm wondering if this could be written differently to not have the -- I realize it was not meant literally to imply you couldn't have bird feeders. I'm sure that was not the intent. But whenever something becomes a rule, a law, it is always subject to be interpreted literally. So C3 says allowing animals running at large, or wild animals, to feed on one's own property. So when those squirrels come, I see them up on my suet feeders. I see them jumping on top of my bird feeders. That would violate C3. Even if I never put any feed at the base of my bird feeder, the birds keep knocking it out. So again, it would be down at the base of my bird feeder. I'm sure there are bird feeders that can be purchased, but this doesn't have anything in it really stipulating that only certain types of bird feeders can be used. So this is my concern, that the way this is written, while I understand the intent, I'm concerned that it could be used at any time to say somebody is -- who is feeding birds is in violation. I would also like to hear what the problem is with the squirrels being fed from the fallen bird seed. Because this clearly -- squirrels were called out in here.
I answered this the other day to someone who complained.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
No, 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 no. It was out in the public. And I said, this will be -- and we've talked about this, this will be complaint-driven. So if you are putting so much bird feed out in your backyard that you are pulling in lots of squirrels, lots of skunks, lots of, you know, coyotes, feral cats, and your neighbors complain about it, then it probably would be an issue.
Okay.
Since it's complaint-driven, the normal feeding of a bird and the squirrels coming in to get that is not what we're attempting to do. And so that was my answer to it.
Okay. Did that work for you guys?
Yeah. The intent of it is the enforcement is only for major violations, and no one is saying you can't have a bird feeder in your backyard.
Okay. Do you understand what I mean about if you take literally the way it's written in B and the way it's written in C3?
I understand what you're saying, but you have nothing to worry about. Unless you're overfeeding the whole neighborhood of rodents and other type of animals.
I see squirrels around my bird feeder, but sometimes --
And squirrels aren't really even the problem.
Sometimes my dogs and I like to watch those squirrels, too. Hair rises, my dog.
Well, squirrels are raccoons, you know, they come after bird feed. If there's not an abnormal amount there, it's not going to cause an issue that your neighbors are going to complain about.
Yeah, I haven't eaten raccoons in my yard. There would not be any bird feeders if I saw raccoons in my yard.
Well, they do, they come at it, too. So I'm surprised, because --
They cross, can climb the fence?
They can, yeah. They can climb almost anything.
Anywhere.
They're as amazing as those squirrels, I think, when it comes to getting food. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. Nathan Hutchison of 220 North Brown School Road, son of Don Hutchison. Just wanted to speak in support of this ordinance. Thank God. Been waiting for years for something like this to come along ever since I've lived at the residence since 2007. I'd like to preface this, which I'm not a cat hater of any type, and I do realize that -- and that happens to be my problem, is the open feeding of the cats. I do realize as any living thing that it'd be treated with compassion. However, my problem is with the enablers of this, which are those who choose to feed them. And I understand that their intent is to keep from having homeless cats, but the problem is over the years, it's simply created more and more and more. Every year, there's just an abundance of them, and it's absolutely out of control. This started, like I said, about 2007, and there are literally cats everywhere. On a given day, in the backyard of my neighbor's house, I can count probably 15 to 20 cats, which seems insane, but that is just the amount of cats in that one yard. They dig holes everywhere under the fences, as I heard stated before. As soon as you plug one hole under a fence, they dig another one. They leave trails throughout the yard, kill the grass. They destroy my last -- one of my last deployments I was on overseas, I was told that all my lawn furniture had been destroyed, tore up, so we can have nothing outside. As my father mentioned, my mulch gardens, we cannot grow bushes, any kinds of trees, they tear those up, use them as a litter box. There's feces everywhere. The outside of my house always smells like urine. And keep in mind, I do not own any cats. And this is constantly a problem. The back of this neighbor's yard is constantly filled with piles of empty cans, all kinds of refuse and garbage and scraps that are being fed to the animals. So the cats being fed, as I heard earlier with drawing other animals, brings in all kinds of raccoons. I do have the internet cameras on my house to keep tabs for security, and every night there's probably about six or seven videos of the squirrels, cats, even worse, the raccoons and the skunks coming and going, same path to the same yard to eat. This becomes a problem with the raccoons because obviously they carry disease, and they are not afraid of people. So I can get within one or two feet of one of them, and they are not scared. And I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son, who I do not trust to go outside by himself because he wants to pet everything, thinking it's a puppy or a cat, and he's going to approach a raccoon. And like I said, they're not afraid. He will get close and they will attack him. Every once in a while, it just happened last night, a squirrel joins into fun, or I'm sorry, a skunk, and half the neighborhood smells like skunk. And this is like, at least once a week, that it just permeates to the whole house, the neighborhood smells like skunk. So the problem is, I went to the -- and I understand this will be new ordinance being adopted and complaint-driven. Years ago, I tried to go about this the correct way, went to the Vandelia Police Department to file a complaint, at which time I told them I'd read the state city ordinances, couldn't find anything that actually said that they could not continue with this. He spoke with the neighbor, and she simply, I guess, gave a bad attitude and said that she will continue with that, and there's nothing, anything, or anyone can do about it. So this is a -- I see this as a public health issue with disease-carrying animals this attracts. Having, it's a public danger with the wild animals it is attracting, and it's a plain nuisance, and it is a visual nuisance as well. So I'm very in support of the ordinance, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Gabrielle Madden, and I live on Mystic Lane 1077. And I think that'd be okay if you gave a cat a small handful of food if they were at your porch. I think because if it's only a small handful, they'd eat it and go, and it wouldn't attract any animals. And also, they already are homeless, and I think they deserve a small handful of food from a human, and you know, that'd be nice. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Tasha Gibbs, and I live at 410 Tyanda Drive South. And I am here tonight to speak in opposition of the proposed ordinance. The city of Vandelia is considering an ordinance that makes it illegal for residents to feed feral cats. This ordinance will turn good-hearted people into criminals. The proposed ordinance does not even address what is the only effective solution to the overpopulation of feral cats, which is a trap neuter return program. Feeding bans have actually never been scientifically proven to work, but trap neuter return programs have. With a feeding ban, the TNR program is impossible to carry out, and cats will continue to reproduce. And I know at the last meeting, there were members in attendance from Calico, a nonprofit TNR organization, who actually offered to put boots on the ground in Vandelia, Ohio to help address the feral cat issue at no cost to taxpayers. It doesn't make sense to me that a solution has been offered and is currently in motion, but the city is still considering a feeding ban. There is no scientific evidence to back up their effectiveness, and I would like to ask that the city does not move forward with an unenforceable feeding ban and let Calico, along with private citizens, address the issue with the TNR program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments from council?
The only thing I'd like to note is that the feeding ban, again, is complaint-driven, as Ms. Fairst had pointed out, but it's also, we wanted to be proactive and do something immediately because it's almost become an epidemic problem within our city. It doesn't preempt the ability to engage in a trap neuter or return program, but this is just one more idea in order to stem the tide of all of these feral cats. And as the Hutchinsons aptly testified to, it's become a real issue, and it has to them and to a lot of other citizens. And I think we're obligated to take some aggressive action for really the health and safety of the community. And I think that's what's driven our movement towards an ordinance. But again, it's not the sole remedy, and we certainly would be proponents of other concurrent remedies, but this is our first step. And I personally am a big proponent of the ordinance as it stands.
I'd just like to make a comment, then also, we did, and we have, we've all investigated the trap neuter and return. And for the situation that we have here in our city right now, we needed to do something more immediate. And I understand that it takes approximately, please forgive me if this is wrong, approximately five years for that program to take total effect. Now, if indeed these organizations would like to get together with the community members and do the trap neuter and return, that would be great. But as of right now, this is our first step, and I think that we all agree that this may not be our last step, so.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
Why pass a law that can criminalize some of your good-hearted citizens that has actually never been proven to work, instead of using the first steps as attempting to see what happens with the trap neuter release program, instead of passing this ordinance that there's no evidence that that has ever worked?
Well, it's not, the ordinance is not necessarily aimed against only the cats. It's the skunks, raccoons, and other animals that are being drawn in by, and we talked about this, the bags full of cat food that aren't a handful of food to a kitten on your doorstep kind of maneuvers. And it's not meant to be enforced against people who are responsible. It's for people who are irresponsibly laying out tons of food that are drawing the varmints in, which in fact are -- and then there's the litter box issue with the hordes of cats, but no one up here wants to see the cats. You know, the trap neuter release will be great, but it's the people who can't respect their neighbors who are overfeeding that are the targets of this, and that may only be two or three people. But I mean, they're not, they're not willing to compromise on how they're doing things. So I mean, I understand your side, and I hope you understand our side as, you know, and I'm glad you and everybody else are speaking about this.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to give me your name and address, please?
My name is Kathleen Durg, and I live at 1049 Bristol Drive. And you pretty much just verified everything that I was going to say, I stepped up too soon. But just to remind everybody that, you know, cats were brought over here as a pet, and unfortunately, this is a man-made caused problem where these poor animals were just tossed out. "Oh, I don't want this animal anymore. It's a disposable thing that's thrown out." And then unfortunately, people are feeding them, and then they reproduce, and the poor things, you know, for me, to know that they're living daily with ear mites and ticks and fleas, and then there's the renal disease that the males' cats can get. I mean, all, it's, and so it's, it really is a sticky situation, because we have the good-hearted people that are unknowingly then promoting the condition to just get more and more. So it really, but anyway, I want to thank you so much for your time and effort into looking into this matter, and I do support the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll go on with our agenda with the city manager's report, and we have no information items, but we do have an action item. Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So council has received an application from Claudia Terrell, who's requesting appointment to the planning commission. And council had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Terrell during your steady session prior to this meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, move that we approve the application by Ms. Claudia Terrell to the planning commission.
Second. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Fairst, to appoint Ms. Claudia Terrell to the board, to the planning commission. Any comments?
I think she'll make a fine addition to the planning commission, especially with her background.
Thank you.
Welcome her board.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and that motion carries 7-0. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution for this evening, and that is Resolution 17-R-27. Mr. McDonald, by title only, please.
17R-27, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a letter of understanding with the United States Air and Trade Show.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So annually, the city does enter into a letter of understanding with the U.S. Air and Trade Show. Per the terms of that agreement, the city agrees to provide police and city services and direct support of the veteran Dayton Air Show, which this year will take place on June 24th and 25th. The city will be reimbursed should any of our expenses exceed $21,900. In return, the city receives one flight land chalet with 200 tickets for each day at the air show.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move that we approve Resolution 17-R-27.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Blakeslee, or, I'm sorry, Gerhard, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-27. Any questions? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-28. Mr. McDonald?
17R-28, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of one replacement command staff vehicle requested by the Division of Fire to Bo Townsend in the amount of $30,876.50, and declaring the existing command staff vehicle being replaced surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Division of Fire budgeted $45,000 for the replacement of a 2007 Ford Expedition with over 125,000 miles. All three local dealers were requested to provide a quote for a heavy-duty crew cab configuration. However, only Bo Townsend Ford submitted a quote. Bo Townsend submitted a 2017 Ford F-250, crew cab with a six-foot bed and four-wheel drive. The price from Bo Townsend Ford is below the state bid price for this vehicle as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 17-R-28. Is read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by council, and Herbst, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-28. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Resolution 17-R-29. Mr. McDonald?
17R-29, a resolution authorizing the purchase of Hewlett-Packard D3600 drive enclosures and related equipment for the 217 backup storage upgrade requested by the Information Technology Department through the State of Ohio HP STS Contract Number 534515-39 in the amount of
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. $25,000 is budgeted to upgrade the city's backup servers. A backup solution is critical for maintaining a historical copy of files for records retention as well as for disaster recovery. The city's data needs have increased annually, thus necessitating the need for increased backup storage. We did receive three quotes with SHI providing the lowest and best quote through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 17-R-29. Is read.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, second by Councilwoman Fairst, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-29, as read. Comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-30. Mr. McDonald?
17R-30, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing an annual Verizon purchasing agreement for cellular service requested by the Information Technology Department through the General Service Administration Federal Supply Schedule Number GS35F0119P in the amount of $28,000.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Verizon Wireless is the city's primary provider of cellular services, including cell phones, hotspots, and data connections for fire and police computers. Our current contract with Verizon is a government pricing through the General Services Administration. In 2016, Verizon services totaled $25,486.72. We have added a few lines this year so that cost could increase around $2,200. So our anticipated 2017 costs through Verizon are not expected to exceed $28,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 17, I mean, Resolution 17R-30, as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fairst, second by Councilman Ayers, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-30. Once again, any comments or questions? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Setzer?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-31. Mr. McDonald?
17R-31, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of equipment for the communications center upgrade requested by the Division of Police from Agile Network Builders LLC in the amount of $17,040.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. The 2016 county-wide radio system upgrade to the State of Ohio's Multi-Agency Radio Communication System, or MARK, system, necessitated the use of state-contracted agile networks for a router connection to the MARK system. Agile Networks -- Agile Network is the sole source provider for connectivity to the MARK system. Our 2017 serviced and maintenance agreement with Agile Networks will be $14,880.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash thirty-one, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Gerhard, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash thirty-one, as presented. Once again, any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash thirty-two. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen R thirty-two, a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with William Bergman for commercial building plan review in the amount of $80 an hour on an as-needed basis.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzy?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city contracts with the Plans Examiner for commercial plan review services for the examination and review of construction plans and documents. Quotes for these services were received from four Ohio Board of Building Standards Certified Master Plans Examiners. William Bergman, who has been providing the city with these services for the past 13 years, submitted the lowest and best quote of $80 per hour. The fee for these review services are included in the cost of the building permit. Thus, the city is reimbursed for these expenses. Based upon discussions with council at your March 6 study session, this agreement is for a three-year period.
Thank you. Motion?
I move that we approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash thirty-two.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash thirty-two. Comments? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Resolution seventeen dash R dash thirty-three. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen R thirty-three, a resolution to engage special legal counsel for the purpose of joining in legal action regarding the constitutionality of Substitute Senate Bill 331.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Recently enacted Substitute Senate Bill 331 severely restricts the city's ability to regulate the installation of small cell antenna and related equipment within the public right-of-way. The statute permits small cell facilities to be placed anywhere in the public right-of-way. A small cell antenna can range anywhere from 60 to 78 feet in height, while transport antennas could be anywhere from 90 to 120 feet in height. The city is required to grant a request to install a small cell facility on the right-of-way within 90 days, and it must be treated as a permitted use and cannot be required to go through any local zoning review. Therefore, the City of Andalia, along with member jurisdictions of the Greater Dayton Area Mayors and Managers Association, as well as the Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Association, will be engaging with the law firm of Vice Miller to bring suit declaring Substitute Senate Bill 331 as unconstitutional and otherwise in violation of Ohio law.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution seventeen R thirty-three.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilman Blakesley, second by Councilman Herbs, to approve Resolution seventeen dash R dash thirty-three. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. We have no ordinances in their first reading. We do have an ordinance in its second reading, and that's ordinance seventeen dash zero seven. Mr. McDonald?
Ordinance seventeen zero seven, an ordinance rezoning part of the property located at 3320 Benchwood Road from residential single-family one to Gateway Business and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzy?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, this request has been submitted to rezone a 0.996 acre parcel at the northwest part of 3320 Benchwood Road from residential single-family to Gateway Business. The request is a logical extension of the Gateway Business District, which this parcel butts to the east and is in compliance with the future land use map. The purpose of the rezoning is for the redevelopment, or I'm sorry, the development of a full-service restaurant. The planning commission reviewed this rezoning request at its February 28 meeting and voted four zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will open a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records and your comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we approve ordinance seventeen dash zero seven in its second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve ordinance seventeen dash zero seven in its second reading. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have an emergency ordinance this evening, and that is seventeen dash zero six. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen zero six, an ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Andalia, Montgomery County, Ohio, during the calendar year ending December 31, 2017, and amending ordinance sixteen thirty-four and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzy?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, this ordinance would amend 2017 appropriations as follows. In the general fund, an additional $150,000. This is for an edge payment to Johnson Electric, for which the city will be reimbursed by Montgomery County. In the water fund, an additional $554,740. In the sewer fund, an additional $261,487. And in the golf fund, an additional $181,850. And this is to appropriate funds for budgeted capital projects and debt service payments, which were reviewed and approved by council during our budget review, but was inadvertently omitted from the 2017 appropriation ordinance.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your statement? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move that we approve ordinance seventeen dash zero six as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayers, second by Councilman Gerhard, that we do approve emergency ordinance seventeen dash zero six. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbs?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have emergency ordinance seventeen dash zero eight. Mr. McDonald?
Seventeen zero eight, an ordinance amending Chapter 668, animals of the codified ordinances of the City of Andalia by adding Section 668.19 prohibiting the outdoor feeding of animals under certain circumstances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cruzy?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance would prohibit any person from knowingly or recklessly leaving food or feed outdoors so as to attract animals running at large or wild animals. Feeding one's own animal outdoors would be permitted so long as it is done during daylight hours and does not attract animals running at large or wild animals. It would also be a violation to leave food or feed outdoors after daylight hours, to leave food or feed outdoors unintended, not in the presence of the owner's animals, or allowing animals running at large or wild animals to feed on one's own property.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open it up for a public hearing. So, once again, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make comment, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records and your comment?
I just have a short comment, actually. My name's Heather Hillary. I'm actually from Logan County. I don't know if you need my address, but I just wanted to say I understand why you guys are enacting this. I actually went through this with my own county, and we were actually given a resolution of support, and they handed it over to me. Feral cat problem, so to speak. I know you guys are looking more at the wildlife. I just want to say that if you take, cats are resource-driven, so if you have these people that are feeding them and you take that away from them, they're going to cause more damage. They're going to get into more trash, more dumpsters, more things like that. So, I would encourage your residents to have feeding times, which it sounds like you are all about that, no feeding after dark and that sort of thing. But I think, I think this needs to be more educated-driven, because I'm hearing that this is kind of what your resolution is, no feeding. Well, you're going to, you're going to have more problems than what you've got now, so that's been my experience, and I just wanted to put that out there, you know, where you're going to have more cats looking for food elsewhere. So, you're going to have dumpster divers and trash ripped open and things like that. So, I just something to keep in mind with your residents that are feeding, maybe educate them a little better, but to ban them, that's going to cause some problems with your city, I think. So, I just wanted to kind of put that in your ear, because I've been doing this for quite a while, and hopefully I can help, so, okay?
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there any others?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify when I was speaking earlier. It's not about birds, and it's not about somebody not being able to feed their cats. I have had cats in the past. It's about when there's just so many, and when somebody has cats or dogs or whatever their animal may be, I can see where they'll maybe leave a can out or something, a bowl. That's not the problem. Before I come over here tonight, over across behind this building where it used to be from the State of Ohio, just across, I don't know if any of you have had the occasion to see what they have going out there in just the middle of a whole commercial area, where there's three or four, like igloos, animals, houses with the gates tore off of them, straw, and they're, from what I've heard from reports, feeding them out there in the parking lot behind the dumpsters up to twice a day. This is not an occasion where you have somebody just taking care of their own personal animals. And like I say, I didn't want to have the inference that it was against squirrels, rabbits. I mean, you don't even see anywhere near the rabbits you used to see around any of the areas where I live now or friends that I have over off of De Sales and Damian. You just don't see them. They're, I don't know what's happened with the feral cats or attacking them. Got no problem against rabbits, but it's when you get the ones that are notoriously known to carry the diseases that they do. I just wondered if you had a chance to see that over there right across behind that state building?
Does everybody, excuse me, does everybody understand where he's talking, what location he's talking about?
The building right straight across.
It's in the grass area. It's behind Pizza Hut, and that little wooded grass area between the
Back of the carryout.
Across the street and then Pizza Hut over there on National Road.
Yeah, it's right there. Here's the dumpster, and then here's a little cat city where people are feeding the cats up to twice a day.
Oh.
And there's no residents there whatsoever. So, it's a blatant open feeding frenzy area.
We are aware of where it's at, yes.
They will be taken care of.
Thank you.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I understand is that somebody, somebody drives there a couple of times a day to feed them, so, yeah, they will be on the lookout for that person.
I, I know that during our last neighborhood watch, we had the person from the Resource Center come and talk to our group. However, we need, we need somebody to be able to talk to all of us with a little bit more detail of the consequences of some of these things. I don't know if anybody else is up to that or not.
Well, I've had a few conversations with both sides, and there's a lot to learn. We, we do have a lot to learn on this. But part of it goes into the wild animals, you know, encroaching into a neighborhood. I mean, one of the calls was on that, that a coyote was on the back patio. So, I think there's other things we need to discuss, and I've had an offer from one of the wildlife people to come in and educate us, maybe educate our citizens. So, I think this is an ongoing program we're going to have to put together. This is our first attempt for something that we know is going on. It may or may not work. We'll have to adjust as we go, but there is a serious issue. We've been asked to deal with it, and this is how we're choosing at this moment, though I do see this evolving into a community-wide program of some sort.
And I believe when we had the Calico people in, that we said we would encourage a group of people, and we would even let them put a posting on the city website and do different things to get the word out about trap neuter release and other ways to possibly thin out the herd a little bit without being cruel in any way, shape, or form. So, I mean, we're, we're open-minded to help with other efforts. This is just something we feel is absolutely necessary, and it's not the average Joe that's getting identified in the intent of this ordinance. It's the people who go way over the top. It's not your, your regular people who are doing their own little tiny or whatever projects as far as feeding that they want to do, so.
Well, I think it's a handful of residents that are really causing this problem, and now it's becoming a health and safety issue, especially when you have a resident that has to undergo rabies shots, you know, four weeks of that. When you're attracting animals into our city where we have children playing and so forth, that it becomes a safety issue. And, you know, I understand wanting to be kind and human nature and feed animals, however, again, it's just a, it's a small group of people that's taking it too far, and that's what's brought us to this point.
Yeah, and I would like to add to that, that what Councilman Herbs said was that, you know, I look at it in the broader picture, and this is a cause and effect type of situation. And I appreciate everybody that has come to talk about this, pro and cons, and including a young lady here that, I really appreciate her comments, and really heartfelt, and I think we all have had that heartfelt. And we all like animals, and I don't think we want to see anything happen to them. However, I look at the council priorities, and that's to ensure that the city is physically sound. The other priority is provide necessary safeguards to protect life, health, safety to our citizens. And I think that's what, as you've spoken to, what it really comes down to. And when I've heard testimony throughout this whole thing, when we've been gone through this, I have a whole folder that I've collected of testimony of folks that have actually been hurt. Several residents have, have come to us and testified, showed us pictures, health records and such, that this is, has, that's how far this has gone that has caused harm to our citizens. caused harm to our citizens. And when I hear that, you know, that's, I take that very seriously when, when our citizens have been harmed, either at one or a whole neighborhood. And we're responsible for people's well-being, for well-being. Uh, and, and I don't know that we're responsible for feeding the wild animals. However, that doesn't mean that, that we can't or that we won't. Uh, I think it's been mentioned that, you know, we do it responsibly, and that's when it goes awry, is when they're attacking people. And this is not to say we can't feed wild animals, as, you know, we've already heard before, and as my neighbor has stated, that, you know, you have bird feeders, I have bird feeders as well. And, and that's an example. I have safeguards on it to, to help keep the squirrels from doing that, but you can't help to have, so, and, and that's my, my doing. Um, and what seed does fall on the ground? Yeah, a few squirrels come and gets that. Um, but that's, that's the responsibility side of this component. Uh, what this ordinance does do is, is to not feed animals recklessly. That's the, the whole main point of this, and not to leave it out, and which would reduce and attract unattended animals. And that's really what it's about. And as we know, most animals are nocturnal, and so that's where I think a lot of this comes into play. So if we take this, and again, this is a work in progress, as we've discussed, and I think we can, uh, once we get this baseline down, this, this ordinance, and we can go farther and, and fine-tune that. And I think that we all welcome groups such as Calico, TNR, to come in and, and help remedy some of this. And we know that it's going to take some time, but I think this is the first step that we can have, that we didn't have before, that we can enforce to say, here are these few people, that this is harming our community, so stop it. Now let's look at what we can do to go farther to, you know, find a, a, a better solution to this. So I, I would be for this ordinance.
Anybody else? We were just answering, so now I'm gonna, that was an answer. Those were answers to the public hearing, so now I'm closing the public hearing and asking for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that we approve, uh, ordinance seventeen dash zero eight as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve ordinance seventeen dash zero eight as an emergency ordinance. Uh, I think all comments have probably been made, so unless there's somebody else, you want to call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Uh, council, you have a report from the civil service draft minutes of March the fifteenth. We have a bill listing for February twenty seventeen of two million nine hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred twelve dollars and sixteen cents. And that brings us to our council comments. Mr. McDonald?
Uh, just want to remind council that we're going to go through that procedural gymnastics since we had the work session that was adjourned, and we're going to have to adjourn this meeting in order to call it into executive session after the work session. So, uh, at the end of this meeting, the mayor most likely will just adjourn this meeting, and the reason for the adjournment would be so we can go back to a work session to talk about mulch, if anybody is interested. Um, and then when they go back into this meeting, no further action will be taken in this meeting other than to adjourn it. So I'll just remind you that we have to go through all those odd steps.
Okay.
Other than that, I have nothing.
Okay, now that we're all- We'll get through it all. Uh, Mr. Cruzey?
Uh, nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Uh, Councilman Blakesley?
I think I've pretty much said it.
Okay. Councilman Gerhardt?
Um, just wanted to hit on one of the things you've been talking about, Mayor. Uh, the taxation issue with the state of Ohio and over the weekend and reading the paper and following a little stuff on it. It looks like almost every city in the state of Ohio is probably against this. Um, our name wasn't mentioned in the one I read on Sunday, but obviously we feel the same way they do. So it, it begs the question of, to all of us, again, if the people we're electing to the next level beyond us aren't willing to listen to every city in the area pretty much, uh, voicing against centralizing tax collection in Columbus, then we need to do a better job of electing candidates who, who care about what city thinks cities think. That's my opinion on it.
Nicely put, nicely put. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Councilman Fars?
Nothing else tonight, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Herbst?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Ger- or Councilman Gerhardt. I just want to say one other thing. If you, if you haven't been, we, we get, uh, OML, which is the Ohio Municipal League there, um, minutes from the, um, committee meetings that have been taking place. And if you read the one from, uh, March the seventeenth, you will find that several of our people in the area have asked questions that were very pointed and which the commissioner could not really address. So I think, and I think, uh, Mr. Cruzey read the same thing, and we were talking about it. So I think that, uh, I think that we're getting through. I really do. Uh, don't you feel as though there's been some movement to listen to us as opposed to what it was at one time?
Correct. It, it sounds like some of our local elected officials are willing to listen. I don't know that that's the same feeling across the rest of the state, but we'll-
Right.
-we'll find out.
Right, and they've been asking the, the really good questions, and the answers have been very vague or nonexistent, so we're, we're getting there.
The newspaper article brought up, other than that, but the one percent fee charged basically is a hit right off the top on top of all the other funds cities have lost over the last several years, so very interesting topic.
Thank you so very, very much. Um, with that, then we, as Mr. McDonald said, we are going to, uh, go back to our workshop, and then, uh, we will end that, and then I, we will make a motion to go into executive session. Is that correct?
So moved.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna do that, because, not really, but, okay, so, uh, we do appreciate everyone that came this evening, and thank you, Lyons, for all that you do for our community, and, uh, happy seventy-fifth. And for, for those of you who, uh, have spoken, uh, certainly we appreciate that also, and for those of you who have, uh, some ideas to share with our community members, please, please do so. And, uh, does it, we put up that Calico on our website?
They haven't committed yet. They, as far as I understand it, there's things that we do that they would want us to not do before they would come to do that, so I think we need to hear from them.
Okay.
If they have found some people in our area that would want to work on that, and then what the guidelines would be.
Okay.
See, I could probably help with that. I'm the director of the Logan County TNR project. When I started, we, our city council wanted to enact a feeding ban for the exact same reasons that you guys are dealing with. We had skunks, we have all that. And I said, let me give you an option. And so what they did was put in a resolution of support for our project, and then they just backed off, and we've done two hundred and fifty cats in probably about six months. So, um, as far as, I want to address the, you know, people are caretakers, and if you can find those caretakers, get them to feed responsibly, you know, and to TNR. If you're not spam neutering these cats, there's no point in it. So, um, Calico, uh, they actually helped me get started, and they would be beneficial. I think that their worry is the feeding ban is going to make it harder to TNR, because we have to find out who these people are that are taking care of these cats, who's feeding out there in that field, who's, you know, and also hoarding is different than caretaking. So if you have hoarders, that's a whole other ballgame. And from the sounds of what you guys are dealing with, it sounds like you got a few hoarders. So, um, we are definitely, we'll share any information, and our city council is very, very, very on board with us. Our mayor helps us daily. So, I mean, we will give you guys any information that you ask for, really. I mean, I can leave you my card and-
Yeah, so would you please leave your card so that we can-
Get it, but yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so, okay. Thank you, and we're, we're going back to our workshop.